Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day you give us a Lord, and thank you for the breath of life you put in us, Father. Ask you, Lord, to touch our minds with the right thoughts, Lord, in our mouths with the light words. We give you the glory and we give you the honor, Lord, for everything you've given us. That your will be done and not ours, in Jesus' precious knighthood. Amen.
Amen.
And now I'll call in the orders, Swain County Commissioner Gregor Sessions, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, five thirty P. M. You ready? Please.
Face the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is the adjustment to the agenda, any adjustment to the agenda?
We needed to add a couple items, both of which, or at least one of them, we talked about last time. The second one is a MOU, so the one is for the lease of the, for the helipad, which we've had continual since two thousand and ten. And the other one is a MOU with EBCI for the health department services, which is not changing. And this has been also in effect, I think, since two thousand and fourteen. And so Allison's here to talk about that, that particular one. But most of these I'd like to see if y'all could add them to this agenda.
That's fine, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we move that, put those two items, the lease of the helipad and EBCI, as F and G under the voting items.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. That's it. And we have from Congressman Chuck Edwards' office, Mr. Lake Silver here come visit us. So we're going to ask him if he would like to speak to us and kind of tell us a little bit about himself and what he's doing.
Absolutely, all right. Thank you so much, Chairman and Commissioners, really an honor to be here, talk to you guys. Congressman Edwards has been in office five months, a little over five months. So far, we've been in Swain County about seven or eight times. So we are very present, we're here all the time. In fact, just got off the phone with Bryson City Town Manager, and we're going to be here again next Wednesday. So I hope you don't get tired of seeing me, but I hope you see a lot of me. So a little bit about me, my name is Lake Silver, as he said. I am the new field representative serving Haywood County West. So I am your liaison to the Congressman and the Congressman to you guys. So anything you need, I'm one phone call away, gave the, or gave the Chairman my card and my phone number, my cell number. We work weekends, we work evenings, and you guys can have my cell on speed dial if you want it. There's a few things that we really do for local governments and local constituents. Number one is we do casework. So far, we've completed over seven hundred cases in western North Carolina in our fifteen counties. That's veterans getting the benefits that they deserve and were promised, and we're making sure that they get those benefits. There's people on social security getting their benefits. You know, that's businesses getting reimbursements, tax reimbursements from IRS, passports. So far, that totals over a million dollar advantage to western North Carolina already. And we've just started, we're, we've just started. And that's in the middle of us getting a congressional office up and going. So I, I think you can see that we are definitely doing the work every single day without, without break and working very hard for you guys. Another thing that we do is legislative in nature. The Congressman, of course, sits in Congress and passes bills and passes budgets and everything like that. So we're able to help you guys in that, that front, too. He, he actually serves on three, three committees, which is unheard of for a freshman Congressman. He serves on the Budget Committee, which has a huge impact for Swain County. He serves on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, which is another huge deal for Swain County. If you know what, what goes through, what business goes through that committee, it's very impactful, has a big, it can make a big impact on Swain County. Then he serves on House Oversight and Government Accountability Committee. And they've been in the news recently with some of the investigations that's been going on. But there's a lot that we can do, again, you know, I really am going to be boots on the ground here anytime you want me to be here. We don't have offices, we have our mobile office, and we come to the people. We park that thing whenever you want us to be somewhere, that's where we will be. So this is just, I wanted to make a, a good introduction for myself and for the Congressman, say, hey, I've already heard a lot of, you know, issues that are going on here in Swain County. We're already working on a lot of issues, especially as it pertains to national forest and, and some of those things that you guys have going on. Our radar is up and we are, we are working hard on that front, too. So just wanted to say, hey, thank you guys so much for letting me be here, and please call me anytime. I'm your friend and your, your servant in D.C. and to the Congressman. So if there's any questions you guys have of me, I'm happy to answer them, but just very happy to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I'll give this to, to you guys, you can have these numbers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. And I'll stick around, I'm just going to hear some local issues, and I'll shake your hand at the end.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Next is administrative reports, tax collectors report.
I guess I'm the tax collector. Total budget received is six million, six hundred and forty million. Total figures to date, seven million, nine hundred and ninety-four, and this includes back taxes as well. That, that first number was just twenty-three. Total collected year to date is ninety-four point eighty-six percent. And then you've got your, your back taxes for the month, or taxes for the month were fifty-six thousand, four twenty-nine, thirty-five. Total interest and lien cost, twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. Prepayment for next year is already at nine thousand, three forty-seven. Waste fee collected for the month is sixteen, may, sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one cent. Total collected for the vehicle tax for the month is forty-seven thousand, nine fifty-six, seventy-eight. Total, month collected total is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-one cent. Added lower total, six million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Waste fee for the year, one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cent. And county vehicle tax, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Take it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Next is final, final office report.
I'm also sitting in for that one as well. For the month of April, two thousand and twenty-two, and we don't have any prior years because of last year, we had not done one in April but due to the auditing process. But total revenues for the month is six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-three cents. Year to date, sixteen million, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Year to date, excuse me, we received sixty-four point thirty-six percent. Total expenditures for the month, one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. Expenditures year to date, sixteen million, one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents. We've paid out sixty-three point thirty-four percent of the budget. Current year surplus is two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Solid waste revenues year to date, one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-one cent. Expenditures year to date, one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Current year surplus of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Social Services Fund, total revenues year to date, two million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total expenditures year to date, three million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. A deficit of one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents. Health Department Fund, our revenues year to date, one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy cents. Our total expenditures year to date, one million, four hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. A current year deficit of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
At Social Services, are we looking like we're going to? I know we don't get the money to the end.
Correct, there's a couple reasons, a couple reasons, I think.
It's a lot higher, though, it's getting higher than what it usually has been.
I think we're going to end up about like we were last year. Right now, it's probably running just a hair more, but we make the final allocation in June. And so half of their yearly allocation will happen in June, let's take the sum of it off. But some of it is on our fifteen seventy-one report, the state money that's, and the federal money that's coming back in. We have, we're, we're kind of lagging, and that's why normally we don't give you an April report is because we are lagging about three months of, of money. And so that one definitely is going to be skewed for that reason.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Budget amendment number seven.
Say again. The, first one, the school request for capital for funding compactors. So normally, when we first did the compactor units out at recycling, we put one at each elementary school. And we've had an issue with those, especially just dumping every three weeks. You have a lot of like milk and different things that's, that's corroding some of the system there. And so we're having to replace those a lot quicker than even the ones at the, the main facility for that reason. So they've gone up, they're about thirty-two thousand dollars apiece. And so this is going to be, this particular one is going to come out of the Calvary Reserve Fund for the school, since it is going to be a school building, building. So these are for two compactors, one at the high school and one at the middle school. And then, let's see. And you know, we've adjusted the way we did, the second one is the Tax Office DMV. We've adjusted kind of the methodology, how we've done the tax office when we did. We split them up, we now have an appraisal section and we have a collector section, which is what used to be back in the nineties. And then also kind of got rid of the DMV a little bit, even though they're contracted. So this is just kind of adjust those line items out of that one to make it match. Because we've had an increase, we've also had people that, when they retire or when they, they leave the county, if they've got a high level of like vacation time, you have to pay it out at the end, which also skews the budget, because we do not budget for that. If somebody leaves, we just have to do a budget amendment to make that happen. The rest are deeds, this is the state, state share of the excise tax. They get half of the excise tax we bring in, and that's just based on volume of deeds that are being put into the system. So we have no idea how to, how to exactly calculate that. The court system, computerization grant, this was a grant that was given by Dogwood Health Trust, twenty thousand dollars, and it was for a thing called, there's two of them, Crave and Wave. And the first one was, the last one's Wave, which is a wireless, like wireless accessibility for courtroom. And then the Crave piece is new lock microphones and things like that. So we, our staff kind of administered that, we also put in all the cabling, which is twenty thousand dollars, put in all the cabling, all the infrastructure to make all the, both those possible. And then we've had a lot of additional overtime because of call volume with EMS. We're looking at, at gaining that back through EMS fees, so you'll see that on the bottom there, and then you'll see the different ones. Fifty thousand for appropriated fund balance total, the Wave grant, twenty thousand, excise tax sixty-five, and Article forty-six seventy, and that leaves the compactors, for a total minimum of three hundred and five thousand.
You want, got any questions on this amendment? If not, I'll entertain a motion, except.
Make a motion, we accept budget amendment number seven.
Make a second.
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. Public comments? No. Moving on down to voting items. We have the minutes for my April eighteenth budget work session, April eighteenth regular session, and May the second work session.
I'll make a motion, we accept all the minutes, all at one time.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Pass unanimously. All right. Next, the TDA resolution.
So after the, the meeting last time, I think there were some, some suggestions. And I tried to incorporate that, I've given y'all a copy, kind of a red line version. I think there was an issue about the, the chair being, you know, like the chair of the commissioners. And so went back, and this is just another tweak. So three members shall have initial term of one year, three for two years, and two for three years. The final member shall be a commissioner appointed by the Board of Commissioners. After said terms, all members shall have terms for a period of three years and accept the commission seat, which will be a, be a one-year term. And then also put it out the bottom where it talks about being in five members that are actually engaged in travel and tourism industry and one member that is on the Board of Commissioners. So that's basically the change. So anyway, it's y'all's pleasure, what you want to do with that.
Any questions on that, or?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to have any questions, just we, we discussed it some last time, and there's, some of the counties around us do this and have a, a commissioner sitting on the board. We've never done that, so it's going to be a little bit different for us, but, but I'm, I'm fine with doing that and, and hoping that, that commissioner, whoever it is, for those, their terms can convey to, or make our voices known and then also be able to bring information back to the board as well.
So what, what are we changing here? The three members should have, okay, the staggering, and two for three-year terms.
Now, that, those are already done. Okay, we're just trying to implement that final one, which is.
But that red, for that two ain't supposed to be red?
Well, the initial thing was, it used to say three-year terms.
Oh.
And three for.
Three for three-year terms, so we took that out and made a commissioner one.
Yeah.
I still don't necessarily see the need for a commissioner to be on the board. We know when the meetings are, we can go to the meetings, we can in fact talk and give our input if we choose to. I have, went to a few. Is this letter, are we going to read it? Did they send this to, is this about this?
We got that this afternoon.
This afternoon, so I just seen it, so can we read it? See what they say, that's from the TDA Board. You want me to read it?
Oh, you want me to read it?
I can read it if you want me to, I'll read it. If everybody can hear and understand me. This is from the Swain County Tourism Development Authority. See who signed it.
Jeremiah Johnson.
Jeremiah did sign it. Dear Board of Commissioners, per request of Swain County Tourism Development Authority Board, this letter is being written to address recent concerns regarding board composition and appointments. The current TDA Board has endeavored in the last, I better put these on. I wished I didn't have to do that, but I did. The current TDA Board has endeavored in the last term to work seamlessly with the county to continue to leverage occupancy tax collections for the proliferation of the tourism and lodging industry within Swain County while continuing to invest in capital projects that also benefit the community as a whole. Examples of which are funding Swain County pool improvements, funding ADA ramps at Swain County Recreation Complex, funding EV charging stations in Bryson City, paying for building at two-ten Main Street, sold proceeds benefiting county additional improvements at Swain County Pool Complex, funding for landscaping improvement at Bryson City Town Square Completion TBD. It is felt that the overall direction and composition of the TDA are working for betterment of the county at an unparalleled level, and the current board members are engaged in the success of the TDA mission. Despite the success of the TDA throughout the last term, it has been suggested by county government to materially alter a board composition in two ways that would be a detriment to the long-term success of the TDA mission. It is felt that a majority of tourism industry participants within Swain County concur with the below observations. Number one, including a member of the Swain County Board of Commissioners as a voting member of the TDA. It is felt that the inclusion of any elected official on a volunteer civilian board could perhaps skew, intimidate, or bias members of the board in an environment where open collaboration and sharing of ideas is necessary for optimum results. Further, the separation of government influence on TDA financial decisions has provided a good check and balance on appropriateness and financial allocation, of financial allocations and limit county government exposure to community-based questions and allegations. Traditional and more conventional participation of government officials on volunteer boards has been ex officio in a non-voting advisory capacity only. Reduction in TDA board membership, which we don't do that in this, do we? Reduction in TDA board membership, the current TDA Board consists of nine board members as seats vacate due to term limitations. Incumbent members have attempted to recruit new membership from a wide variety of tourism-related industries in Swain County. Examples include in-town lodging, retail, outside lodging, agritourism, fly fishing, deep creek tubing, anaheila, Fontana Lake, et cetera. Reducing the number of board members also reduces the diversity and inclusion of various points of view from different areas of the county. Further, with nine members, attendance is sometimes still challenged. Reducing count could also limit ability to establish a quorum and further consolidate the decision-making to a smaller group, which could be ripe for misuse and unethical decision-making. Number three, related to items one and two, at a meeting on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Swain County TDA provided a unanimous consensus that current board members whose terms are expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three and complete applications for reappoint, and complete applications for reappointment should be given the opportunity for reappointment beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three. The current group possesses synergies and has performed well together. Respectfully, Swain County Tourism Development Authority signed, Jeremiah Wiggins is the chairman. Which I guess we do, we don't change it from nine, but putting a commissioner on the seat changes just the structure of it. This last thing they're talking about, whose terms are expiring, are they wanting to give the people whose term's expiring another year or something?
Another three, three years.
Another three years.
So they can.
But we've got rules to that also, right?
Yeah, but these are all first-term.
These are all first-term, so they're just nominating those guys. Okay, so they just put the nomination in the later.
I mean, I can, I can talk just a little bit about it, whatever y'all, the board chooses to do with this resolution is fine, but, you know, the state law pertaining to occupancy tax is very vague in a lot of different areas. You know, it can be, they can do a lot of different things with the money. At the end of the day, this board, your board, has enacted the tax. We collect it in this building. The TDA is charged with spending it. You appoint the TDA board members to spend taxpayer money, whether they're a local person or an out-of-state person renting a hotel. You are the one in charge of doing that. Their audit is no longer their audit. The reason our audit is late is because of them. We don't have an audit for last year because our auditors are still auditing their junk, their stuff. So I'm just saying, I feel a great need. I disagree with the letter from the standpoint of a commissioner not being on the board. You have just as much vested interest in how that money's spent and the way it's spent as any other person, and you actually have more, because that's a part of our audit. That is a part of the audit that, that we're paying for. And so that's why I say, you know, I think some of this was, was directed from the standpoint of, you know, it is a self-serving board, we've said that before. Everybody on there has a business, everybody on there spends it for their, the way they are. But at the end of the day, it's not their money. This is taxpayer money that they're collecting on behalf of this board. So this board should have a big voice in it.
I agree.
That's just my opinion.
I agree, and I, I believe.
I said that for.
I, I believe, I believe having a voice on that board is, is the right thing. And even more so now that they don't want that. You know, so, but. You know, I'm not saying nothing bad, but what I'm saying is, I, I think we, we ought to have a voice. Because I asked you a question when we were at the last meeting, is what is the TDA budget? And what is the TDA budget? Nobody knows.
Nobody knows?
Nobody knows. And I think would be, I think it's imperative for us as a board to know some of the things that the TDA are doing and not necessarily tell them how to do it, but just so that when the general public asks us, so where did TDA get this money, or where's this going? We need to have an answer to that.
Mr. Chair, may I speak to that?
Sure.
I believe that we, as a board, have the right to make them, tell them to come here and show us the budget, correct?
They're supposed to come by that.
By the.
Thing, it's set once per year.
So we can tell them when to come. And we can actually, if we want to change this, we can make them come more, couldn't we?
You can make them come more.
I mean, they're our board, just like we said, they're our board. We put the people on there, so I feel like we do have a say in it altogether already. We put them on there, we voted for the chairman of the board, and I, I just, I think it, and by the law, it's, they are directed in how to spend it, and they have to interpret that law, we don't. I mean, we can tell them what we think about it. But I believe we can make them come to the, show us the budget if we choose to make them, or ask them to.
So if they want to keep their board members, just like they are, there's nine, correct? We would, if, if we choose to put a commissioner on there, that would be ten people on the board.
So it would still be nine.
Still we nine. So they would lose a person. No, the commissioner would take the one that's being appointed, correct?
Yeah.
Spot.
Would take an appointment spot.
Okay.
Which they might lose a person anyways. They might not get, they recommend us.
There's still, there's still one slot available, even if those three.
But their terms up, and we, do we vote on their terms?
This year.
Right, so we, if anybody applies, they might not all get on that board. It's up to us who we put on the board if, if they apply. I mean, we got to have people apply for it.
One of the other issues that, you know, throughout, and I've just, I've just witnessed it over the last couple of years, people are busy, and they're getting busier, it seems like. And you don't have, it's hard sometimes for them to get a quarter. like, and you don't have, it's hard sometimes for them to get a quorum. I've been to two meetings that had a quorum of members show up, and so it might be time, you know, to exercise y'all's authority to say, we're going to implement a $50 stop-in. If you show up to a meeting, you get a $50 stop-in, just like solar water, just like a lot of other boards, and that way they have a vested interest in at least showing up. Because that has been a, a thing, and that would also alleviate some of the stress with the nine-member versus seven-member, because I think they have nine members to get that edge to make sure they have a quorum, because they don't like that five for a quorum. But if you eliminate down to seven, you still want that four.
Hey, we're, we're still gonna have to have, I mean, we got a rule right here. If they fail to attend at least 75% of the meetings during the calendar year, she automatically ceased to be a member of the authority.
If, if it's brought before us, but there's been an occasion back in, in February, actually, it was stated that two members weren't there on a, say the conversation, but they failed to send us a letter, and they kind of-
And again, if the commissioner's on that board, we would know who was there and who was not there, and-
Let's just bring them in here and give them, give us a monthly report. Let's let their board be separate from ours. I don't believe we need a commissioner on there, but let's bring them in here and let them tell us what they're doing and where their money's going. Instead of once a year, let's get them in here pretty, for their balance, ain't we?
Yep.
Hold on, Miss, hold on a second, Mr. Chairman. Was yours in the form of a motion?
I, I'm ready to make a motion if, if the floor wants to, if the chair wants to-
I'm fine with that.
We have, we have discussed this. I, I'll make a motion that we adopt this TDA resolution, Mr. Chairman.
I need to say?
I'll second.
Just a point of clarification, just making sure. David had mentioned having them come in on a monthly basis. We've got an ordinance for the, the resolution, it's once a year. Do you want to change it to quarterly or monthly? And if so, you can amend it to take that in place. I just want to make sure, I don't know, whatever y'all think.
Quarterly is not bad.
I would have a problem doing a quarterly.
If the motion's for this resolution as is-
We'll have to get that motion off-
Yeah, we'll have-
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, let me, let me clarify. If the, if this motion passes, there's be a commissioner to be able to give the monthly report when he gives his commission report. If this motion fails, then we can redo a motion, have them come quarterly or however often it wants.
Let's run the motion like it is, it's been seconded, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed likewise. Pass three to two. Next is a crypto mining resolution. And we've talked about this too, so we don't, I don't know if, as far as going through this crypto mine, I don't think we need to, we know what it says, except for you was going to change-
We did change it.
Okay.
We took it out.
So what was changed was the first opening line, right?
What talks about peaceful? I can't remember what it said, I don't think I remember.
Any questions on this? Not all entertaining.
Yeah, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. It says unenclosed crypto mines. Even if it's enclosed, what does that specify? I mean, you're still going to have the big fans and stuff running on an enclosed facility, correct?
Uh huh.
So that defeats the whole purpose to the whole thing, correct? If it says it's only unenclosed, right?
Right.
Am I mistaken? Because the main issue was noise? I'm, I'm, I don't know.
I don't know how they're built.
You got to have a vent fan, I'm sure, and the fans is going to be on the outside of the, I'm sure the building over there is an enclosed building.
So, so this resolution, I may have said it before, has no power whatsoever. Y'all are not zoning here. It is asking state legislation to look at it from the standpoint of, of that in general. I mean, if you want to limit this, you would need to come up with a moratorium first and then develop an ordinance against it, similar to the way we did the, the power, the towers, the power lines.
Yeah, but even with what you're asking here, for them to look at, you're asking them to look at unenclosed, not enclosed buildings.
Right.
Some, sometime, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to be speaking out of turn, but sometimes when folks have an idea and they want to move into an area, seeming like we as commissioners are the life's people to know whether they're, have good intentions of employing lots of people, all this, that, or the other, and all the good stuff. And I realize the folks Cherokee County were sold a, a bad deal there, you know, because of the noise that it creates.
Can we drop unenclosed off of this? Can we drop the word unenclosed, just put crypto mines?
It's crypto, it's period.
Enclosed and unenclosed?
Underground, it don't matter where they-
Whether enclosed or unenclosed.
I was just pointing it out, I was just, I was just pointing it out, because I mean, I'm not for-
Yeah, I would take that away, you know?
I'm not for restricting them anyways. We do everything else for a dollar. If somebody wants to sell their field for a million dollars, and they do that, it's had more power to them. Because building million-dollar houses on mountain tops here.
So can I get a motion with this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with the, we've already taken that wording out, so as the-
Take out the unenclosed.
Unenclosed, make a motion that we pass this.
Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Likewise, on opposed. Pass four to one. Moving on down to the fire contract with the town of Bryson City.
Every year, we have the same contract we have had for a long time, basically for $40,000. You said fire contract. You mean JCPC funding, right?
Oh, I missed JCPC. I skipped that one. We'll go back to JCPC funding, how about that? Kind of plan.
So each year, we have a juvenile prevention council that goes through and looks at different programs that for adjudicated youth, and we set different budgets based on the amount that we get from the state of North Carolina. This year, we're getting $80,389, and we have to match that. The current match rate is a little less than 10%, 7,731. And so, Pay Setters is getting $38,000, or recommended that we're giving them, $38,367. Height, which is restorative justice options, $14,444, and Hawthorne Heights, which is the emergency shelter, at $24,501. A little bit about, of course Hawthorne is the emergency shelter, Height is more of a counseling, trying to get the kids back into, you know, into programs that, that's going to keep them off of getting out of trouble. And then Pay Setters is a venture, more of an adventure platform where they go out on a, like a ropes course, and it teaches team building, and maybe, I think there is a wilderness component as well to that. So that's the three programs that we've had for, for quite a while, and they're, the JCPC's recommended funding of the $80,389, plus the $7,731 of county match, and then you see other matches that are, that are in there. Pay Setters is putting some money in, for a total of 142, 152 for the 2023, 2024 fiscal
Any questions on that?
Is that a lot different than what we usually do?
No, it's the exact same.
It's the exact same?
I entertain a motion, we accept the JCPC funding and county plan.
I'll make a motion, we accept the plan.
Need to say?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? No, all please raise your right hand, favor. Passing now. Now we'll move on to the fire contract. Ready to get that done, huh?
As you see, the town voted on this the other day, I believe, or their last meeting. It's a $40,000 contract, which has been the same for quite a long time. They wanted to go to a yearly, you know, yearly type of contract. So anyway, this is for the Tukasiji Fire District. So it's everything outside of Bryson City for the Six Mile District, which encompasses all the way to Elock, I believe. And it's the same amount, 40,000, for 12 months, so it will automatically terminate on June 30th, 2024, unless we come back and, and do another contract, so. But every year at this time, we do the same thing.
So they didn't ask to load more money on that?
It's pretty much been the same since it started up. I entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the contract with the town of Bryson City for the Tukasiji Fire District.
Can I get a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passing now. Next, we item F, it's the lease for the helicopter pad-
Yep.
-of hospital.
But this is the same lease that, that has been in effect since 2010, and this is basically the, I've mentioned before, had a new, new owner, and now we're going to be, it's for the same amount, $4,500 a year for this, and it's for a 10-year, or two 10-year options, and also, we added in there a right of first refusal, meaning if they sell the property again, then we would have the right to buy this property at some point in the future, just in case.
Any questions on that?
So if they try to sell it again after-
If, if they try to sell it, then we can come in with an offer, as long as we match the offer, then we would get it, as the first or other future.
Offer on just the helipad?
Just the helipad, yeah.
But everything else is the same, just a new agreement?
I entertain a motion on that as well.
I make a motion that we accept this lease agreement and right of first refusal.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Pardon me for the helipad.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Wait, I, I got a question, so this is basically for 10 years.
And then we got two five-year options after that.
Please raise your right hand, we'll do that again. I'll pass it now. And item number G is EBCI agreement.
This is a three-year memorandum of understanding between EBCI, Jackson County, Haywood County, Graham County, Cherokee County, the state of North Carolina. Yep, that's it. So it's basically the same agreement. I think there were some, some issues with a few wordings here and there. This is in state statute already that we have to provide these services, so it's nothing new about it. But in, I think, 2014, we had to start doing an MOU because there was some taxation, I believe, was taken away, and so we started doing the MOU process at that point, so. And it's about, sorry, it's about health departments and their role on boundary property.
Are we going to have a health department? I only have one question.
Go ahead.
You don't have any issues with this?
Not with this draft, I do not.
Oh, that's my one question.
More questions from Ms. Allison's while she's up here?
I mean, this is what we got to do, right?
Yes, it's in state statute. We're required to do it. Each county is required to do the food, lodging, tattoos, daycares, pools, in their respective county, and that includes the boundary in each of our counties, basically. So we are required to do those inspections.
Any more questions? If not, I entertain a motion that we accept this EBCI agreement.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Can I second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passing now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
You will actually sign it when I get the official one?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any new business?
Two things. The first is, of course, the budget message, which I'm going to read. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 15911, the proposed budget for Swain County for the next fiscal year is hereby presented for your review and consideration. The normal and accepted presentation of the budget to the board commissioners includes only the budget ordinance. This proposed budget sets forth a plan of operation for all county departments, programs, and projects for the coming year. This proposal, proposed budget is a balance in accordance with the state law, with revenues and expenditures totaling $23,496,044. This proposal is presented without prejudice or favoritism toward any person, department, or organization. We have endeavored to be as objective in our approach as possible. We have tried to keep the interests of the taxpayer in mind at all times during this process. Literally hundreds of hours have been put forth into this request, reviews, and recommendations of the proposed, this proposed budget. As Swain County strives to be a leader, it is our responsibility to promote progressive government sensitive to the needs of the citizens. It is our intent that the proposed budget reflects that commitment to our citizens. This budget process is never simply, simple or easy, takes time and effort, and this necessary ability to make hard choices and sometimes unpopular recommendations. This year has been very challenging due to requests from agencies that are seeking the effects of the recessionary economy, needed additional funding to continue operations. We strive to include all necessary expenditures without the need to increase the tax rate. This, along with adding additional programs of staffing for multiple departments, has been difficult. The personnel committee had- The personnel committee had several meetings with the emphasis being on how to retain qualified employees. The committee recommended four thousand per year for employee cola raise to help stabilize the workforce and create an attractive organization to recruit qualified workers. Most governmental organizations in the surrounding area are suggesting a three, three percent to six percent per worker increase. Most governmental, I'm sorry, per, per position raise this year. Including in this budget is a two thousand dollar per employee raise, which equals an overall increase for the organization of six point five percent. In addition, the committee is asking the board to consider a contract for a third party to conduct a salary study. There are two additional budget requests this year that is not included or partially included in the budget. First is the fire department requesting for paid personnel and the second was a seven percent increase in current expense allocation for the school system. These items were not included due to lack of funding.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the second one, this goes back to, um, last year a little bit. We had to go back, we're having to do a new resolution for the land swap at the Beesla plant due to the fact that, um, that a new, uh, survey has been done. So it has to be placed in the paper, uh, for ten days prior to your June sixth meeting. And so you'll have a new resolution, uh, on the table then. And it'll have the new details as far as, because they wouldn't go with the, the original survey. So we had a, a new survey done, um, I think that was it. But I basically had to match, so. Anyway, that's the only thing else I have to say.
Yeah. Any more new business?
I have one concerning issue from a citizen. It's about the Heritage Festival. And their thoughts on having competing festival at the farmer's market on Swain County property during their Heritage Festival. And the reasoning is because they had vendors sign up for the one that's free and they had competing music and everything for that festival. And they felt that it hindered participation and things to that matter. I don't, I said I would bring it up, so I am bringing it up. Wanting to know if.
It's on Friday, right? Don't, don't the farmer's market do Fridays? I think that's what they do.
They do Friday and Saturday.
They do that Saturday, right?
Which they could do.
It's the same vendors that, that do, they don't, the vendors that are setting up at the farmer's market, one, they don't participate in Heritage Festival. They, they normally don't. I mean, they never have.
I was asked if there was a way that they could possibly not have a competing, apparently they have enough festival during that.
They're having like a festival.
Like singing and stuff during that.
We're at the.
At the farmer's market little area that they had singing and stuff there last.
They have singing every week.
Did they?
Yeah, they have, they have a paid entertainer that comes in every week for the farmer.
So I was asked that, maybe they could cancel theirs for that Saturday during the Heritage Festival.
Who, who would they call, who?
TDA runs it.
TDA.
We also have an agreement with TDA for that property, so it's, and. I mean, I'll speak for my personal, I mean, I, I can see that, but.
The downside of that.
I could go over and sell, sell produce, so, I mean, every, every Saturday, so I don't, um, I don't know. It's, it's, uh, it's one of those catch twenty-twos if you're gonna actually, you know, allow that to, it's fine. Cause I, I really think that of the vendors that I've, I've seen over there, I don't know how much we're coming with the other side anyway, myself. But we had the same issue, actually that question's been asked the last three years now, I believe.
It's been three years.
It's been TDA sponsored as far as the, the farmer's market.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I said I would bring it up.
Whatever, whatever y'all want to do. If y'all want me to call them and tell them.
Mr. Chairman.
They can't have it or whatever.
I would just think the downside of that is you've got people that come in, sell some little, make little money selling at the farmer's market. Now we say, well, you can't come in there to do that. And they're, they're used to that little bit income every week, so I don't know that that would work. So there, that is a.
I don't know. How does the vendors, how does the vendors sign up for the farmer's market?
Another double edged sword, I guess.
Everything is, how do the vendors sign up for the farmer's market?
They got, majority of them are, you know, they're kind of like, I think there's like thirty or forty that, that come in. I think they rotate them out. A farmer can come in, they need farmer. But the crafter is the one that they have problems, you know, have to rotate out. But the farmer can come in anytime and that's, you know, they, they try to get farmer, that's what it is, it's farmer's market.
They want the farm fresh eggs.
Yeah, they want the farm fresh stuff. That's, I don't know much about that other side.
Just check in to see what the issues might be, maybe. See if there is issues and see if it's overwhelmingly.
They may want, they might want to go to the Heritage Festival.
Well, the fair, I think the Heritage Festival is worried about going out partially anyways, especially, which I don't know. We, I've got to find out. When we talk about building onto the courthouse and stuff, is that something that we are definitely having to do? The judge can force us to do that.
At some point in the future, he'll probably do what he's done to Graham County.
And if he does that, that means we have to, and that's the superior court judge. Because they're wondering where, where they're gonna go, because they do a lot of stuff right there at Riverfront Park. They have the singing on Friday nights and stuff and. That's another issue.
Got to move to the event center.
Event center.
I guess, probably so.
I believe Bryson City can handle two bands playing at the same time.
They probably can.
They have several playing and other, don't, don't the, didn't the Chamber of Commerce do some singing at the square? Do they still do that too? I don't know. I brought it up. I don't know the issues. I didn't go to the, the Heritage. I ain't been to none of their stuff. I don't, I don't know. I was just asked about that.
Any more new business? No, in closed session. I'll take the motion to the jury.
Make a motion with jury.
Second.
Any discussion? All, please raise your right hand.